In order on Monday, we have an agenda this evening that was posted out front and we will be following it throughout the evening. Okay. What I'd like to do, our first discussion will be for ZPT on Reed Street applicant. ZPT is a Reed Street real property and that'll begin at 7:30 so if anybody's here for that, please stand by. Other than that, based on the agenda, what I'd like to do is have the board present this evening go down to number eight, please, and slot that off with the administrative board for the first fifteen minutes. Payment is a motion to accept the payroll for Kathy's loan for $197.40 as written.
I make the motion that we accept the payroll as written for Kathy's loan.
Very good. Motion made second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With that, the minutes of March 25th, everybody should have a copy of them.
I see one thing.
Couple's bill?
No, next meeting date. The meeting date was March 25th and the next one was March 1st.
Oh, took the nickel first. Did I do that just to keep you guys on your toes?
Oh, okay.
To spell check.
Yes.
It's spelled right.
Elsipho?
Yeah.
It's a motion to accept the minutes of March 25th, 2019, as written.
I make the motion we accept the minutes of March 25th as written, just with the date.
Put that one for it. Would you read a second? Any other concerns or comments to be made over there? Fair enough, all in favor?
Aye.
Go to the, in your file, there'll be a Reed Street Solar Development Gmail. Want to take a look at that, please? Just a comment being made about it. Sue, you've read it?
Yeah, I read it.
Okay, everybody's read it, Melissa? Okay, all that is there is the two words that are underlined and questioned, should have said retention basins throughout the perimeter. Okay? So that now that we know that, that'll be brought to the applicant's attention this evening. Memo from the town manager at Palmer. March 16th, a planning show will be held concerning this issue. The issue that's being held in Palmer is something everybody has been talking about for years. The master continent transportation is exploring the feasibility of expanding east-west passage rail service between Boston and Pittsfield. It is now an open discussion that we had. It is not hearsay, it is something that they are looking into. And there will be a meeting in March 16th, excuse me, there was a meeting, to discuss it at Palmer. There will be continual meetings going on and everything will be going through Palmer at that time. We have ten topics that were hit on at the time, all of the train stop in Palmer and then continuing on in Springfield and then on the way up to Pittsfield and then return trips to Boston. So it opens up the avenue. So he will be, or Charles Blanchard will be notifying the surrounding towns and other here in preferences, which could be good for many. What I'd like you to do now is, the board, take a look at your 7:30 commitment right here for Reed Street, please. Kathy has it all. I tagged up, if you would, take a look at the graph. We have about seven more minutes here before we openly discuss it. Everybody will take a look and also Kathy, the J.
Yes, I have it. That's why I have that signed right there on top. I have to email it to anyone else.
Just read through it again and I don't think there were any corrections. There might be a word here or a word there.
I wonder last week, no, no, that's fine. Posted, any errors checked.
Yeah, if you, yeah, take a second if you could, just, you can use just the one thing that's going through there, put it down to the.
Oh, that's right, evacuation of Boca Hill Day or something, that's right.
Atrids Day.
Atrids Day, one of those days.
That's why that meeting got moved to the 17th.
Yeah, 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 I get it.
We're just reviewing the decision for Coyette's property, ZPT of Reed Street. We have the decision and everything. Maybe one correction that we have to. That'll.
I don't have that.
Yeah, we'll put that under, under commission concerns or you just want to add it to. Okay. That doesn't matter. Kathy, what date can we close this?
It says on it.
November 25th, I think. Is that what it was, 25th?
Two weeks ago.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
That's exactly two weeks ago.
Twenty-two.
Yeah, right here. Thank you.
No problem.
Bob, you understand everything in the decision process?
Yeah, I think so.
So. All right, glad Derek reviewed that. What I'd like to do now is, two weeks ago, we closed the hearing on special permit application 289, site plan approval and decision for ZPT engineering selections, and that's like 749 Reed Street, the old Coyette property. The discussion was had with the board, referenced the decision, and the decision process is here. Okay, what I'd like to do is, first of all, in discussion, the whole project, is there a motion to accept the site plan presented by ZPT for Reed Street?
I make the motion we accept the plan from ZPT for Reed Street.
As discussed and as written and as presented, correct?
Yes.
Presented, I'm sorry.
As presented.
All right, motions have been made, seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I cannot vote, I recuse myself for it. So I'm out of the vote now. Is that done? The decision process also includes, what we have in front of us this evening, what we've had an opportunity to read, all right? And before we go to that, what I'd also like to do is have the board individually vote for the planning itself and the site plan. Bob, Susie, yes or no?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Melissa Sapanic, please.
Yes.
Sue Libby?
Yes.
Derek Bullis?
Yes.
I recuse myself, as I said before. Now, between you four people, Sue, you do this, I'll recuse myself again, with the decision, you have a copy, but you can use mine. Have the reading decision and the facts that are presented and prepared by the board and have the review on that. Make a motion to accept it, Sue, and then an individual vote, please.
Okay, make a motion that we accept the special permit app 289 for Reed Street, as written. Is it a second?
Second.
Vote.
Aye.
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 All in favor of accepting the decision? Kathy, do you have the?
Melissa has the.
The final. Payroll signature as the name is presented on the right-hand side, please sign the out.
It just won't be the, well, can we go do it right now?
Okay.
Well, I'll just print copy.
Right, that'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, we'll get you a copy before you walk out, okay? And while they're doing that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take an opportunity to correct.
I'll send it to you in the morning.
Take the opportunity to correct a statement that was made last week. Adam got that, because at the time, everybody here was talking, you probably saw his in the office. Any reference to catch basins that Adam's questioning and he's from, it's your retention bases, that's all it is, within site.
That's fine.
He's the word, it's just mistaken in wording if it was made.
We maintain that.
Freudian slip.
Yeah, we maintain those anyways, part of our operation maintenance.
Yes, sir, we understand it, we understand it, it was just a, pardon me, but that's great, thanks for him correcting it or catching it and thank you for accepting the way it was. With that, we open the call.
Kathy, on the ANR? Yeah, I thought we did too. Now it's sitting right there.
I do have it.
You do have the ANR?
I do, yeah.
Okay, we got ten minutes. With that, the form A's on the, is that correct?
I have the form A.
Yeah, I have the rest.
The my line, we need the may of four.
Four copies.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, we're getting good at that, I don't know, all because of Kathy.
Yes.
What we'd like to do for everybody here and the board, this is an ANR being presented by ZPT for Coyote, right after, right after the Cosby's small miniature hospital property set off to the right. What I'd like the applicant to do is just to explain to the board and everybody present, what, how the property's gonna be either cut out, broken down, or whatever at this time.
So, the property's right now, there are two lots there right now, so this just reshapes those two lots. Currently, the array kind of goes over this northern property line here, so it removes this property line and still provides frontage off Coyote Road, sufficient frontage for the two lots. The back lot, the Cosby lot, will kind of be a strange shape where it has its, a dog leg to get back to the area that will remain as the Cosby piece, and this area here will be here.
I don't believe it, we don't have the lens, but everybody if you look at it, I'll hold it, I'll look at it and talk to you again about it, just to be all clear.
So, right now, there's a property line, there's two, two dog legs that go back and then there's a large, like forty acre piece here, and then a smaller piece that currently goes up and around, and there's some land right there, and then this is the Richardson property off to the right. So what we're doing, because the array kind of crosses over this property line, is removing this property line and restructuring, and so this is all one big lot, and then this area has its frontage through a dog leg that comes back out to Coyote Road. So roughly the same shape of the original lot, it just kind of gets bigger, and this one has a different shape to the dog leg that brings it back out to provide frontage off Coyote Road. So two lots, again, same thing, just, just changing, getting rid of some property lines and creating some new property lines.
Administrative questions from myself. Total acreage to be used and total acreage that'll be left to the Cosby on the right-hand side with the dog legs?
The Cosby piece is probably close to ten to fifteen acres. Twenty-two, sorry, twenty-two point seven eight acres, and then the other, we're doing lease, so we're not buying any of this, but the other property that's currently owned by St. Lucy LLC is gonna be forty-nine point three eight acres.
Questions by anybody? Highway superintendent, go ahead, please.
Is it just gonna be one access point to the solar arrays or two?
There will be two areas of frontage, but there'll be one, the road, the current road that's there, the dirt road, will remain and be improved, so there'll only be really one road back there unless the landowner decides to put a second road on his frontage.
Thank you.
Marty Richardson?
The conservation board maps show right of way to Cosby owner that borders our land on the north and west, is that changing?
No, that's still there and it's shown on the plan, it runs on there.
So the right of ways are all remaining even though the land is changing?
That's right.
Okay, and then buffer is part of these right of ways?
That's right.
How does that work? I thought buffer was buffer, not road.
Well, it's not a road.
It's a right of way.
Right.
For what, walking?
For whatever the landowner chooses to use it for.
I'm sorry, could you explain that, please?
The right of way exists for the landowner to use it for whatever purpose that they want to use it for.
And that's different than the buffer?
Yes. I don't, I'm not exactly sure what your question is.
Well, on the maps in the conservation office, the buffer and the right of way are for the, is different than that, so I'm asking you to clarify it.
I'm not familiar with the maps in the conservation office, I really can't speak to it. The ANR that we have here for being proposed shows a right of way for the landowner to get to his, his, his property over here.
I'm still not sure about, so the fencing will be on the outside, the right of way will be on the inside, the border will be a road, but it won't be a road?
I'm not sure what those questions mean. The, the road will be outside of the fence, the right of way will be outside of the fence, but a right of way and a road are two different things.
Okay, and the buffer?
Yeah.
Is a road?
No.
Is a what?
The buffer is a buffer.
Uncut trees?
That's correct.
Outside the fence?
Correct, yes.
So I still am not sure how the landowner can access their land through trees, that's the only thing the other side of the fence.
Are these questions?
You're showing, well, you know, it is a question here, you're coming in off Coyote Road, this is your gravel road, correct?
That's right.
All right, now the question, this is your gravel road coming in, and you're across the creek here approximately, right? Mike Cosby, the landowner, has this triangle in here, okay, comes across and goes around to get out to this back atrids against the Richardsons.
That's right.
But I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, your buffer around the facility from down here and around, okay, is, is how much?
The buffer, so there's really no rework down here, it's all up to the north, but I think what she's talking about is, is up.
Show it that way.
Yeah, so this.
So explain it, thank you.
I think she's concerned about the north because her property's up to the north, so the array is here, there's the fence, there's some cleared area, and then there's the buffer zone, which is about forty feet, I think, from the property line of uncut trees.
What we're looking here, looking at here, and we've got in more depth, how the property's being broken up, okay? The plans for the project will show that more clear, is that correct?
Yes, all, yeah.
Okay, this is just showing how the property's cut out.
Right.
Mike Cosby's gonna have this.
Right.
You're gonna have this, okay? So that's the ANR, that's what we're concerned with here. When it comes to the other questions, Marty, you'll be able to see and/or they will, excuse me, the applicant will be able to explain in better detail what's going on. This is just showing boundary lines right now. The wording and the description will show from, as the highway boss will know, and the applicant, from the road, how it's gonna be broke up and what detail of where the buffer will be, where the fencing are, once the applicant lays the plans in to be discussed. Your questions are good, yet they can't be determined here yet because of the way this is just boundary lines and straight lines, okay? So there'll be further, that question will be noted here, and I'm sure the applicant will be able to describe it a lot better once we have detailed plans or the site plan in front of us, okay?
Okay, but the plans are in the conservation office, the road for access, for clearing, for staging, I believe it says on it, to go, we also own the land on the west side, the north side and the east side. So that land shows that the access road runs vertically up the east side across the top.
This way, Mike? These are just, right now, these are just boundary lines. Conservation will, you can address that also with conservation. This is just showing a separation now with distances and. This is just showing a separation now with distances and a.
So, those maps that are in there are just conservation maps?
Is it the map I?
Yeah.
It's our map, it's conservation.
It's, it's ours. They're the ones they look at that are presented to us, okay?
Want me to go get them?
No, this is an A and R.
Okay.
Okay, so when that stuff opens up, no, we have, we have, when that stuff or those hearings open up, that is when you can go in, present it, and talk, and get a better description, conservation, and the applicant then, and then when it comes here. This is just showing how the property is being broke up, okay? Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate the call.
Is there a motion to accept the plan for the A and R for ZPT Energy Solutions, Coy Hill?
I make the motion that we accept the plan for A and R.
Second? On favor?
We're going to sign them all, right?
Yes, sir. Yep.
That's today.
Yeah.
All day.
Couple more.
So, share.
He's very non-confrontational. If you take it for him, he might.
The Coy Hill one is at eight o'clock, do you want me to go get the maps for you, or?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. 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 Copy for the applicant. Do you have a copy of this?
I'm not, I think it's something that we didn't submit, and I, I don't have a copy.
No, you just.
Hopefully you submitted it to the applicant, I don't know, but.
When she said conservation map, I didn't know it was something.
She just got it.
In the office. That's got to be shiny.
You bet the my law.
If you want, you got to bet the my law.
All right, if you mind. Is that going around? The decision for Sincofer, and a decision, and a vote, please. Get your decisions out. Special permit, application number two eighty-one, Little Rest Road. See the files on?
Yeah, no, it wasn't there.
Yeah. You know. She's not here either. We don't have them.
She sent them to us, but I didn't bring my copy with me.
My copy is right here.
You all had a chance to review it because it was sent to you.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
All right. I guess I got the.
Yeah, I think she just gave you a clean copy. She sent the rest of it to us by email.
Everything was satisfactory, reference that after review. Obviously, nothing came back to the office or to me or Kathy. Give her a second. Get back in and run the office. Get the time. Marty, with that, at eight o'clock, when the applicant does present the plans for the hill, right? We can take a look at the plans at that time as you present, okay? And then we can look at that question also. But I, as I referred to before, conservation would be where you'd really stop looking at town's layout, okay? Kathy's making my difference. We're going to do the. We should have, we're going to do. Sincofer, please, let's go. It's all right, this will. Grab a bungee or a rubber band and throw them in there. That's the final?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I might have to run again.
Nah. All right. After hearing all the discussion and everything else, we've closed the hearing on this a few weeks ago, all right? At this time, is there a motion to accept special permit?
I have one question. The same Freudian slip on this one with the catch basin?
Yeah.
Needs to be corrected.
On this one?
Yes, because I wrote the note to Kathy, and I used the wrong terminology. She just typed what I wrote. So, it should say retention basin versus catch basin.
Very good. We'll make a note of that, I didn't know you'd done it on that. All right, with that, is there a motion to accept the plans, the site plan for special permit application two eighty-one? Site plan approval on Little Rest Road for Sincofer, L C. Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we accept the site plan for two eighty-one approval of the Sincofer on Little Rest.
Motion made, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 No. Is there a motion at this time? We'll take a individual vote also. Derek Fales?
Aye.
Sue Libby?
Yes.
Melissa Sapan?
Yes.
Bob Suzer?
No.
Bill Ramsey? No. At this time, is there, on the decision? On the permit of two eighty-one, the decision that we, you were emailed, reviewed, and was discussed, the decision is in front of us right now? Application forty-nine for Sincofer on Little Rest Road, is there a motion to accept the decision as written in full?
I make motion, we accept the decision as written in full with the correction to retention basins.
Okay.
Instead of catch basin.
Okay. Motion made seconded, could there be corrections?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. No. With the final decision, Melissa, you have it in hand, please. If you would. Signature on the payroll, payroll signature, and type in on the right-hand side, please, right there.
I'll have to go for it.
That's fine.
Well, she has to change the words.
Yeah.
So, it's.
Why don't you collect it now?
Kind of.
And bother.
You were bothering.
And that has the same.
You can't send it.
So, it's.
Yep.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
If I may ask a question.
Uh, yeah, kind of, go ahead.
Just, I want to recap those votes and what they were and the yes and nos. The first one was to accept the site plan.
To accept your plans presented. We had closed the hearing, remember, we had closed the hearing a couple of weeks ago, correct?
Yep.
No more information, anything else. Tonight, we're making two votes. The first one was on your plans. Okay, presented in the talk we had, how everything was worked out. You have three yeses and two noes.
Right.
Okay. Now, on the decision. The decision that you should have gotten a copy of, if you have it, the decision is right here. The decision is, the final decision on the board's the facts based on the bylaws and the decisions. To the talk, all the bylaws are here. And it touches on as far as hours of operation, vehicles, the applicant coordinated with the fire department. Most of it is what we had talked about in discussion, eighty percent of it is, ninety percent. Basins will be cleared as you had talked about and everything else.
Sure.
On the decision vote, there was three for, uh, three for and two against. Okay?
And it needs a supermajority, so that's no pass, correct?
That is about what it looks like, yes, sir.
And is there any discussion from either of the noes on, on why it was voted no?
There doesn't have to be. No, there was no discussion on it, we each did so individually. No discussion was, there was no discussion by the board members between ourselves.
Sure.
We do not discuss anything on email, that's understood by all of us. There was no discussion in the office. There was discussion here is on, here on the floor. And that was as open in public hearings, and then the final vote was made individually. With no one being, uh, no one being influenced by outside or anybody else.
Okay.
Okay.
So, then the two noes are, I mean, they were discussed, but it's because we didn't comply with the bylaw?
Bob, you coming?
I don't have a comment at this time, Mr. Chairman. My, my decision is no, and if they want a, um, a reason, I'd be glad to put that in writing for them.
Okay, very good, and that would be the same as I, if we question you.
Okay, that would be great.
Okay. We're just going to wait for Kathy to type that, and then we'll get it back.
Last question, is an email sufficient to ask Kathy about the no votes?
Yeah, sure. If ZPT would, do you have your, we don't, I don't know if we have one. We don't have a stand for plans, do you guys, did you guys bring one?
I don't, I don't have it, I have engineers out here. Get night out on the table.
Well, if we could, maybe Kathy's got some cash, we can hang it up there, because I'd like everybody to say.
Stagl's? Stag.
Stag.
You want all of these? Spickings off.
Hey, I got tape.
We can't see it back here.
I get embarrassed.
Somebody's truck. Way in the corner of the parking lot.
White Ford?
Just administratively, next week, it's the seventeenth, not the fifteenth, okay? That's a free Monday? Is there a free Monday? You'll probably forget everything you showed up here.
Don't say that again.
All right, Bob signing that, I'd like to continue the public hearing on special permit two eighty-four, two eighty-five, site plan fifty-two and fifty-three for ZPT Energy Solutions. The applicant is requesting to construct and operate a five-megawatt ground-mounted solar facility. The properties are located on Coy Hill Road, also known as Successor Map Three Lot One, Four, Six, and One, Four, Seven, which are located in the rural district. The applicant is here this evening, and if we would, you can have the floor and continue on with what's going on. What we can do, if you feel comfortable, you can answer questions as you wish to go, as they arise, if you wish to, okay? Instead of having me be involved with that.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. I'm Ernie Mello with ZPT Energy Solutions. So, the site plan is up now, and I can speak for the site plan, and we've, we've had some meetings in the past, this is probably three or four. We've, we've gone through the project a couple of times, and I'd be happy to take any more questions and answers from the board and the public. But really, leading up tonight, we've been focusing on the Graves review, which I believe at the last meeting, we went through all those comments, and they were addressed. There was a few that were outstanding that we came back to and, and we had our answers, and I believe Jeff Walsh was in attendance at the last meeting, and we went through all the questions and seemed to be all addressed. So, the project was a five-megawatt project, it's come down in size, we worked, you know, the project through the Conservation Commission, there was some adjustments we made, it's probably from the original proposal shrunk, you know, five to seven acres, lost about a megawatt of capacity, but the project has received an order of condition, so now we're here looking to get site plan approval from the planning board. So, I know there's still the question as to special permit, site plan approval, which is required. I think that the town, the board was going to actually consult with town council on that issue and.
Your attorney should have gotten a memo from the town attorney, okay? And that answered some of the questions that have arose or have come back, so I'm sure he'll enlighten you on what the town has requested at a certain time.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I may, George Corritti, I represent the applicant. I regret to inform the board that I ever received in my home.
Really?
I got a, an email from him, which I responded within forty-five minutes with a couple of questions to flesh out what he had said in a pretty cryptic, one-line email. And no response in the last two weeks.
Last Tuesday, Wednesday, Wednesday, I spoke with the attorney, gave him the board's decision with one, one request.
I heard, I heard that request. He came back, and I, and I asked him some questions to flesh out what he meant, and he never responded.
Okay.
If I can let the board know that one of the issues, we, so, I've applied to the Superior Court for permission to amend the complaint. The Superior Court allowed that motion to amend. The Superior Court allowed that motion to amend the complaint. The complaint, it has not been served, the amended complaint has not been served, so technically, my perspective is, it's not been filed. And I relayed that to him, it's been filed as part of my motion, which was allowed, but I think the next step for me to do is then file the amended complaint, and then serve it. As the board members knows, and the town knows, it's not been served. Followed, just, I know this is probably legalese, but it's in, you know, I had made this point known to town councils, that I don't think technically that dismissal is ripe, because it's not been technically filed. So I wouldn't dismiss if it's not ripe.
Hopefully, we don't have to, I think that's where we're going with this.
I had said to him, I said, I hope this isn't necessary, this is what we're looking to do. And unfortunately, in all due respect, I, I got no response. So, I was hoping you got to be here tonight, but I am here tonight.
With that, if, if, in my understanding, as long as you agree with him and put it in writing, even though it's still caught in that limbo area, then we can move on with no problem, all right?
So he had suggested the board will decide, I said, decide me to approve, just decide me, um, decide no. He says, I don't wanna trade that lawsuit for three new ones.
Right.
And he didn't respond.
So, can't help you.
I know. So I'm gonna go back to what's...
Thanks for your seat, but...
You had said that, I can't advise my client anymore than what I just told you.
All right, well, thanks for that, and can't help you on the other part, because we did, last Tuesday morning, have a conversation with him, okay? And obviously, you did, and he never got, got to us. So that's where we stand, sir, okay?
I'm hoping that everything is academic after.
Well, as far as I think the board is concerned, it's going to be. And we have, uh, there is no problems yet, or, or questions, we won't say that, but town council should have gotten back to us, and we have not heard. So, we'll give them a call tomorrow morning, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, all right.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take any questions if the board has it, on, on the project. We've, I know, we've, we've discussed it, but if there's anything since our previous discussions, we can, I'll do questions, I know.
None, none yet, get it? None yet? What I'd like to do, Mr. Mel, be on mine, Tom Boldy, Budrow, our highway superintendent, probably has a few, go ahead, please.
Uh, just access plan to the site compared to the A and R is gonna be on the northern property, just, okay?
That's where it currently already is, so, yeah, we're not moving anything, it's, it's all staying where the existing road is.
Thank you.
Tom, these are questions from those that live on the road, administratively from me to you. Access off of Coy Hill Road, taking a right. I don't know, maybe Conservation looked at some of it, I don't think they should have had too much to do with it, and the wetland on the, on the left-hand side, when you go down. How is that road gonna be prepared, so that, uh, so that we're not gonna have anything brought out? You've got a house right across the street.
It's wetland right across the street.
And you got wetlands there. Did you look at that, did the applicant, did you talk to the applicant about that?
I've been up there on site a couple of times with some previous issues before more road stuff, and that's all gonna depend on the access, the angle of, of the road to get semi-trucks in and out, is gonna be...
Is that something...
We're proposing a construction access to make sure that, you know, we don't bring too much debris out, and our contractors are everywhere, and this is something that we do, and is, is looked at, we're always on top of making sure we keep the street, like, clean. You know, we don't wanna be tracking mud and dirt and debris out, so they sweep regularly, we make sure that that's all looked at.
Two, all right, and while we're still here, between you two, these were other concerns, you have a culvert just above, right at the wetland across from the driveway, Tom, that's on the north side going up, right-hand side. That one seems, their concern was it backs up all the time. Okay, is that you, or the town's problem, or is that a problem that can be addressed with debris and stuff coming out? I don't know, I'm, these are people, I'm asking these...
There's, there was some issues that were brought up with the culvert itself, with Conservation, last fall, that were addressed, and have been since, uh, to the exception of Conservation, where it was more off the land. The issue with highway is they have a catch basin there, where the grade is too high currently, and it needs to be lowered.
Okay.
But as far as access to that grate in culvert that crosses the road there, it all depends on how they bring the trucks up. I'm guessing that, I don't know how big the trail is gonna be coming up there, or how they're gonna bring them up, but the access road, once we get to the driveway, it'll have to be large enough and wide enough to accommodate the radius of the semi-truck.
Okay. To the applicant again, from a couple more butters. Mrs. Richardson's sitting here this evening, they have a milk truck that goes up the road a couple, three, four times a week, and that's all hours of the day. One thing that they buttered down, that spoke with me, and on behalf of them, because I live further up, I'm asking that, and it'll be in a, in the orders of conditions, okay? That the road be clear at all times, no one will park on that road, no eighteen-wheelers, nothing. When they come out, they're gonna take a left and go down that hill. The milk truck, as everybody in this town knows, we have soft shoulders, we don't have shoulders in this town. We got soft shoulders, and that milk truck runs straight up the middle of that road. And felt, folks, when that thing's either half-full, three-quarters full and coming downhill, you don't need no eighteen-wheeler or earth mover coming back out.
Okay.
So, please consider that, and they'll be mentioning that, okay? Also, you've got the school bus that runs up and down, from the family up the street, you've got a school bus that runs up and down, and the hours are between seven-thirty and about eight-fifteen, all right? So, with that, please take that in consideration, whoever your onsite boss is, and you guys know, and the board will again noted in the orders of condition, so it can be noted.
Okay.
And the other thing is, the noise, now, they're saying the noise from the commercial chippers. Question, are you gonna be chipping everything that you've cut in there? Are you gonna be taking it out in log length?
Yeah, they take the, the timber out in log length.
So you're not gonna have a commercial grinder in there, are you?
I don't, I don't think so, the, there's only, typically, even, the only thing that would get chipped would be the stumps, but we normally don't grind up every stump, we normally pull them out and truck those out offsite as well.
And you're gonna take your log length out too, you're not?
Right.
Because up on the hill, further up in other areas in town, you've got the commercial grinder in there, and they're taking seventy-foot oaks and maples and just grinding them up into chips. Eight, no, but eighty percent of the woods go off the chip.
Yep.
Chipping, so you're gonna be taking log length out?
Yep.
Okay. They're asking, and I can, they just couldn't come. A flagman, onsite, when your trucks come out, if there's a flagman on the road paying attention to north and south, Coy Hill Road, to either stop the oncoming traffic to get them out quick, or to hold them up, so that the milk truck gets up that road, and the school buses do.
Yeah, we can do that on schedule.
It's just a request, if you consider it, that's, okay, that, those are things there. And on the initial opening, hypothetically, next Tuesday, hypothetically, all of a sudden, there's gonna be two dozers dropped off, and fourteen eighteen-wheelers coming up with gravel, stone, and the culvert, that's gonna cross the creek. They would like to see a police officer on site in the first week, to have, to control traffic come and go, because you're gonna be working right on the road, you're gonna be dropping equipment off. The only way that eighteen-wheeler's gonna get dozers and anything up there is go north. Then it's gonna have to back down the Reynolds Road if he can, or go up and figure out where the, but jeez, he's gonna turn around, because there ain't much up there. Okay? And if there's a PO there to start, get them off, people probably pay attention to the PO a lot quicker than a flagman to get them off. Consider that, or a flagman, okay, to protect that stuff coming off the trucks. Because, you know yourself, you're gonna make a road going in.
Yep.
Okay, and that's gonna be a couple days anyway, maybe in stone and gravel.
There is, there is a, a lot of, there's some area there, but I, I understand the concern.
Not much, because you've got wetlands on the right there, there's a little...
But it's actually to the south of the road, but I, I understand the concern, and I think it's, it's worth considering.
All right, that, that was just, they butter on the right, they butter on down below, and two up.
Any, any stations for vehicles is gonna have to be down six or seven.
Okay.
There's no room in the shoulders of junk, as he says, it's, it's gonna be one truck at a time to unload, and then if you've got gravel, or panels, or whatever coming in, the convoys are gonna have to stage them six or seven. One up, one down.
These are just, you know, not for warnings, but considerations to, to take, because it's a tight area right there, traffic coming down Reynolds Road, there's school buses, and oil trucks going up and down still, and then you've got that intersection. Question?
Ernie, weren't you going to have tub grindings on the south side? Am I confusing you with another site, weren't you gonna have tub grindings?
I think so, I think you're confusing, I can't, I've never even heard that term.
All right, so it wasn't you, you were gonna like grind up the, uh, trees and use them as, um, erosion control barriers?
That was cutler road protection.
Yeah, there was another site, okay, sorry.
Questions, Tom?
Treetops will be chipped though, I'm guessing?
I think so, yeah, I, I would think so, I, I'm not in there every day in the construction time, but I would, I would assume, yes, it'd be a tree, like, processor that cuts these up, like cuts off the limbs.
Right, but for the tops to chip them, I mean, you're gonna have industri, if you cut down trees, you're gonna have an industrial chipper, it's no doubt about it.
Yeah, I, I think, yes, there's a chipper there, but we're not chipping up every piece of wood that we cut out there. You know, there, there, there's probably a fellow bunter in there that takes off the limbs.
All right, okay. You're gonna have, you're gonna have your fellow bunter, trim them, take it out, your skidder's gonna bring it out to a loading deck.
Right.
Okay, at the loading deck, you're gonna have a forward to pick it up, put it on the back of an eighteen-wheeler and take logs out, sixteen-footers or whatever thing, whoever the mill is, or Canada's buying at the time, right? The only, the only chipper you're gonna have in there is for the stumps.
Right.
Okay, the brush, we'll put brush and stuff, right, for everything, thank you. Answer?
I can't put stumps in a chipper.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not a chipper, it's a, like a, like a...
Tub grinder?
I, I never, I don't know what a tub grinder is, I'm sorry. Clearly don't have that experience in the...
If you're doing tree work, there's gonna be a chipper in there. So, I don't know how long this chipper's gonna operate, but if people...
Is it not, is it not okay to have a chipper in there, is this...
Yes, it is, there's no problem, as long as that's part of the logging operation. The thing with that is now, hours of operation due to, you know, up on top of the hill, way up in back, six o'clock, they were running that chipper, all right? Everything started up and, you knew it, okay? We, it's all residential down there, so these are things you're gonna either...
Well, that's what I was trying to say, we're not chipping every, every log that we have in there.
Either we're gonna have to give it across to your, the company coming in, or whether the foreman representing, ZPT is gonna represent, the hours of operation, you've got kids, you've got challenged people, excuse me, challenged kids across the road, and you've got a hus farm right there and everything else, so we're gonna have to work with you, with you folks, and then work with your, uh, your applicant there.
We're responsive to, to, to any, you know, concerns like that.
It's not trying to, we're not trying to hold you up, we're just trying to get points of A and B and C in there, so that we're all on the same sheet of music there. Uh, Marty, you had a couple, did you not?
Yeah, I have quite a few actually, but I'll start with a couple. All of these surface water runoff and everything else that you've done are based on maps, uh, from the ASCS office of Worcester County?
Is that a question?
Yes.
I don't have my engineer here about the drainage, but it's been peer reviewed, and I don't know where he got his data, but they run software and, and calculations that they use for all these different types of runoff and go through the drain.
Well, you can calculate like crazy, but there is a soil conservation office in Holton that we have to deal with. And according to some of the maps that we went over, there's some discrepancy based on the Worcester County maps versus soil types and other things in other parts of the state. I'd like to bring that to your attention, I believe that you're in Worcester County, that you really need to address Worcester County's soil types, topography, such.
May I may, we also, we did actual test bits, so the soil types that were identified were based on actual conditions.
With disregard to the ASCS office?
No, but we, but we're required in every camp basin, that we, every detention basin that we are applying to install, we perform test bits, so that we could not only rely on published data, but also rely on site, site-specific data, which is actually more representative.
And if they fail, is there to monitor that?
We are, one of the advantages with our company is that we not only develop the project, we construct the project, we operate and maintain the project. It's our responsibility to maintain the basins, and the basins where they fail, which we don't expect they will, it's our responsibility to fix them.
And on the maps there, it says that staging area for some of the logging and the work is two-thirds of the way up that steep pitch. When will that be constructed?
There's a facing plan that we presented before, called Conservation Planning, that goes through how the project's gonna be constructed.
Now, I'm gonna go back to my twenty-foot buffer road right away, could you explain it to me, please?
Yeah, so, road, if you're talking about the road for the site, is this, it comes in, it travels north, and then it goes all the way up kind of the northeast part of the site, so that's the access road that we're putting in here. The, the road that's there now, the dirt road that's there now, just kinda goes down the hill and then comes up and kinda stops right here. So, so what is your actual question? I'm just having trouble understanding what your question is, so I can, I'm trying to answer it, but I'm just, I'm trying to understand it.
In those maps, excuse me, the road continues up here to the staging area up here, for clearing the land and construction purposes. Is this right here, and it says right of way to owner up here, but yet the panels go right to the stone wall. So I'm having a little trouble understanding how one could be one and one could be another. Because it says right of way across the top on those maps, and I don't see the twenty-foot buffer or the road or...
So the buffer, here's a property line, and it's, it's more than twenty feet, but here's a property line, and here's the tree line. So the tree line is, that's, that's where your buffer...
Is this the tree line, not the stone wall line? I thought those were stones.
No, that's the tree line, that's the tree line, I know it looks like that, but the, the, the stone wall is the property line, so that's this dash line, and then you've got the tree line off of that, and then there's some space between that.
Oh, okay, I thought that was stones, but I also see this road coming up here to the staging area here.
Yeah, so that, I'm not sure if you looked at a previous revision of the plans, but the road doesn't travel up here, it travels kinda through the center of the site.
So where's the staging area now, if it's not specified on those maps?
The staging plant area is on a different sheet, that's probably in the packet that the, the board has, but there's a one for each one of the phases, and they were laid out and previously approved here. So there's, there's one for each different kind of phase, like when we're building the road, there's a staging area for the stuff that we need to build the road, and cotton the trees, an area for, you know, to keep your machines and keep the log lengths before they're trucked out in there for that process. So they're all at various spots at different times during the construction sequence.
Marty, you have more?
I just find that right angle, the sharp right angle from the road, to be a potential problem, along with the soft shoulders on the road and what they're going to have to construct, and I certainly hope that the culverts and everything, and I know you're telling me that all of the, you know, work, site work has been done, but the reality of that is that once you open up Coy Hill land, the surface water is unbelievable.
Well, Conservation has looked at it, they've prepared by theirs, and I do know that for fact, that Worcester County was not contacted by any applicant in this town, I went back all the way to the golf course. was not contacted by any applicant in this town. I went back all the way to the golf course. And in Holden, they've never been contacted about anything.
That's what we were told also.
And actually even Westbrook, they've never been contacted, because they brought up the Solothurn nine next to Howard's. Worcester County's never been contacted, so they base it on other issues, scientific values, scientific means, conservation looks at it and, you know, Jeff Walsh looked at it. I don't know how it's done, just that when I went to Holden and called, they've never been approached. So I don't know what that'll mean and it's a point because the soils here are much different than Worcester County, than Hampden and Hampshire County.
But we can't do anything to our five hundred acres without consulting the ASCS office in Holden. And that includes dealing with Hampden County, which, you know, we might like to do because they're a little different.
Yeah, I mean, with all due respect, you do have hundreds of acres of cleared land, pasture land to the north of this. That's all been cleared at some point and grows grass and metal, so it can be done. It clearly was done above us, you know, not too far away, so I know there's concerns about how the water runs up, but you worry won't have cleared. It might not have been you, but someone previously had cleared a lot of land up there and uses it for.
But right now, the way the regulations are, we cannot, without getting ASCS approval. You are.
The other thing to bear in mind is that we had Graves look at it. On your behalf, we had another firm look at it, Conservation. So this site has been known as studied by us and the design has been performed by Festival Hill, who was retained by us, but was reviewed by two other peer-reviewed engineers.
Yeah, it's understandable. You've done what you're supposed to, Conservation has done it with theirs and there can always be questions, which is, as long as the bases are covered, there can be questions. Any other questions from the board at this time? Anybody else here present this evening, questions reference the application and the presentation with Quayhill? Tom, you're all set? So far? Alright. With that, there are, I'd like to have one more, at least one more continuation of this. As long as we get the okay from, should we get a copy from Conservation that they've passed?
A long time ago, I sent you a copy.
It was, I think I remember last year.
I buried it in the bottom of their.
Okay, alright, we'll look at that. I'd like to have one more hearing, okay? So we can review it again, just one more hearing, fellas, okay? Do you have a date there, please?
May?
We're on for the twenty-second for Nantucket, is it possible to do that evening as well?
We have CPT bragged for seven thirty, eight o'clock we have Cutler Road. For the twenty-second.
Put, we're gonna put you both on at seven thirty.
We'd appreciate that, thank you very much.
We'll start out with this on seven thirty, seven twenty, seven forty or so, we'll jump into the other one.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Alright, as long as no other questions arise, we'll just keep going with that, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, fellas, thank you. Marty, it'll be on the twenty-second, okay? Anything else or any other concerns? Good day, thank you, fellas, thank you all for coming in for this one. Do we have? Do we have the bylaws? Everybody's got.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks. On the seventeenth of this month, there'll be a public hearing downstairs. Records of the bylaws, proposed bylaws and changes of the town floor. I'll leave it open if you all wish to attend. We all don't have to, yet if there's something you have to do, do it. I'll be there, six fifteen there. And whoever else wishes, I'll be there. Okay.
Wrong, maybe remind you?
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, you know.
We're gonna tell you it's at five.
Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday.
Yes, that will be good.
We're gonna tell you, we're gonna tell you it's at five o'clock.
I wanna raise.
Five o'clock in the afternoon.
They're asking way too much.
Just because of us, huh?
Then start emailing us tomorrow.
You're at the email meeting, he'll share.
I've been trying to get coverage.
Take them out, if you got them there. About to be the one you guys.
Is that it?
I spent all day looking at them.
Thanks, it's a lot of it, Duncan.
I forgot my comments.
You know, it's open to discussion. That's, it came back from Jeff, it came back, everybody's.
No, I don't know if it's come back from Jeff.
It hasn't come back from Jeff yet, legal counsel? Hopefully we'll have one by the seventeenth, please, okay?
By the seventeenth, right.
If not, it's gonna be pretty hard to go on something that hasn't been accepted by legal counsel, okay?
Right.
So somehow. Call.
So, so he must be like quiet because we sent it a couple of weeks ago.
Good for you. Now you know how the pickles, we all have different differences with attorneys and everything else.
Well, I know, I mean, we've used the same thing that we had before too.
Well, we gotta have an approved copy by legal counsel for the seventeenth.
I know. I sent something to Becky on Friday with Jack's updates. So Jack had a couple of comments, we incorporated that, sent it off to Becky and said, this is what we have. I thought maybe you guys would have comments tonight. And if so, we can incorporate and send off to, but she's kind of, but I haven't heard anything from legal.
Okay. It's hard.
Do you have Jack's changes?
Yeah.
Because he thought he could make a copy, so if.
No, 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 I incorporated them and I already sent it to Becky, done Friday. Rachel called me and.
Why did you send them to Becky?
Because they need to get on the warrant.
They need to get on the warrant.
To get them on the warrant, they still have to be approved by legal counsel, right?
So I sent them to Becky and said, we need legal to approve this.
You should have sent them, my enjoys, to Jeff and done it yourself, seriously. Because, do you know that Becky got them out on Friday? Today's Monday.
No, because I got an email today that said, is this the last version?
So she hasn't sent them out yet?
I, as of.
We'd have to assume she hasn't, okay, because if she's asking for more.
Well, we already, I sent something to her, but this was, she wanted like the latest version. So when I sent Jack's changes to her on Friday, she said, is this it? And I, but I sent her a note and I said, we need to hear back from town council, has town council received this? I didn't get any interregarding that. I can, I'll send it directly to, I can send it directly to him, I hadn't been officially given. We always had to, I had to go through board of selectmen last time. The board of selectmen are the gatekeepers.
For what?
For legal.
For legal.
You're the only one with permission to not be a gatekeeper.
I'm gonna call Jeff tomorrow.
You guys have impressions, any kind of like general kind of comments?
Who was?
Yeah.
We just got them out, so.
What do you mean?
I mean, we, excuse, we're having them now. I will call Jeff Blake tomorrow morning. Yeah, I don't have to go to Worcester County, so they'll come in and call.
So Kathy, I'll send you the latest with the updates from Jack, so you have those.
Which, which should have been sent by the selectmen to legal, right?
Not, Jack's comments I got on Thursday, but they, but two weeks ago, a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, I'm losing track of time, I sent this to the selectmen. It was when it was due, it was that Wednesday. And so it should have went to town council.
Okay, I'll call tomorrow.
So you have no changes or comments?
I personally don't, no, I went through them all. The only thing I made note about was the town agent will be enforcing. One, the town agent is who? And two, did, when Jack got, when I spoke to Jack about it or mentioned it to Jack, did he get back to you in his comments reference being the enforcement of the bylaws? He enforces the bylaws in town. Is he comfortable with all this and how they're going to be enforced?
I spoke with him and he was.
Rachel, we talked about this, yes?
With the comments, yeah. I spoke with him, so I relayed what he said to Joyce.
He was all set?
Yeah, and we took in consideration everything you suggested and made those changes.
Did you, did you reference that word agent in there too? Remember I brought that up?
He didn't mention that at all.
He didn't?
He just highlighted what the sections he knew he needed to enforce, so he would be aware of what he had to enforce.
And he was in favor of the way it was worded and written that way, okay?
Yep.
Because he's the one that's gonna, he's the one that's gonna have to go out and issue a cease and desist based on what? Based on whatever we have powder in the bullet to shoot them in the foot. So he's gonna have our backing and the backing of legal counsel to make sure they're enforceable. And all this, it's gotta be engraved, but not polished, engraved and polished by Jeff, so we can do it next Tuesday night. Melissa?
Do what next Tuesday?
No, it's Wednesday.
I like it.
Wednesday, Wednesday.
I like it a lot. I just hope that it passes through legal. I have a couple of concerns, just to make sure that we're all set legally and can enforce these things, because there are a couple of things that I'm not sure of, but as long as legal approves it, I'm thinking it'll make things much easier.
So there's a couple of things that may not pass muster with legal? And that way, there was one thing that Jack pointed out and what we did is we took it and we turned it into a sub-paragraph.
Okay.
So it turned into like a section A from something, so we took wording out and so if town council and/or the attorney general wants to get rid of it, they can get rid of that paragraph, which happens to be a lot of the stuff that you submitted, because we can't tell, Jack was right about this, we can't tell them specifics, so it had to do with the battery arrays. We can't tell an applicant specifics, we can only give them guidelines.
Building codes.
So we can't tell them, like, you have to build it this way with, you know, concrete and so many pounds or whatever, we can't be that specific. So that section we put. So we put it as a subsection and if they want to get rid of it, it can be stricken.
Okay.
And if they overlook it, then it stays.
It would be easier if you got legal's decision, because if we have to wait for the attorney general's decision, that's ninety more days they have the right to make that decision to strike something.
Right.
And you don't want it to impact on the vote.
Right.
So if legal does it, yay.
So there's four specific sections I wanted legal to look at. I highlighted them in red when I sent it to Kathy, so I don't know if you guys got the, you know, the, but anything that said that we can take action to, I just wanted him to double check that we could actually take legal action.
That's the point I was trying to get at a couple minutes ago. If he's gonna take action, it's gotta be.
I just wanna make sure that we can really take action and he just needs to respond that that's okay or no, you're crazy. And even so, there's still a lot of teeth in it. If we take that out, there's still enough teeth in there for it to, if we need to remove those lines, I'm still fine with that.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I just think some of it was redundant from what we have already, but.
Well, it included what we had already, but we kept almost everything that we had, we just beefed it up.
Yeah, I think it was well done. I'm sure it was a lot of work and I appreciate the effort of all of the people that sat on the board and worked together to do this. You certainly did it in a record amount of time. And I hope the next time that we do this, we understand that having a longer moratorium is probably in our favor. We'd had, you know, it would have been nice if we had all the way until next, you know, November to do this, but my hat's off to all of you. It was a lot of work, it's well done. I have two concerns. One, I'm not a fan of restricting projects or business to zones, but I understand why we're asking that that be done, so I won't stand in the way of that. But just so, you know, everybody understands where I come from as a planning board member, I have a little bit of a problem with that. I think everybody has the equal opportunity to build out their land and to do things. I spent a lot of time in the assessors' office today and they bring up excellent points. I mean, we do restrict a lot of uses of lands, bylaws on people, but I'm not in favor of restricting these types of projects to zones. With that said, I'm wondering why the committee, on the other hand, allowed such a generous number of eighteen projects to be planted in the town. And I really don't have fault with that, I'm just curious as to how you arose to that number. I would have thought it would have been more closer to a dozen.
So, five.
Right, which is where we're at, so that would solve a lot of things.
Let me tell you, it is one more than if everything that goes through gets permitted.
I was thinking that that might be more.
It is only, it was two more. It was two more, but then if Bragg Road goes through, then it's only one more. So everything that we have permitted and so, you know, like the Moore and Property, those are two. The golf course, those are three projects, so we, you know, they're all separate permits. Everything, if everything goes through, which we, one of them didn't go through, so it's, there was an, we have six, there's an additional seven and then that's, oh, hold it, I'm getting my numbers wrong.
Yeah, it was more really just a curiosity fact as to how we came about to that number. I certainly would have.
It's two above what we had expected.
Right, so, that's fine. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any real questions. Again, like I said, I think it was a lot of work to produce in that short time, so I appreciate your efforts, all of you.
I didn't agree with you with the zoning, with the commercial. I didn't agree with that, yeah. I didn't agree with that.
But it's always tough, I think.
I get it.
Yeah, no, I do too. That's why I don't, I'm not gonna put a big front to it, because I understand why it's necessary. I mean, if the state laws were a little more forgiving to the towns to make decisions for themselves, that probably wouldn't be necessary. But in the, you know, in the situation we're in, can't say that it's not.
I have a question. If this goes through, what is the state going to say?
Well, I think that's what we're gonna wait to hear from the attorneys and all and see what they have. You know, the attorney general and all of that, they're gonna, they're gonna put their stamp on it. So, I mean, if they stamp it as okay, then I guess they're assuming that if something ends up in court, we have a pretty decent bylaw to reside on, so.
A lot of what is in there, in fact, most of it is from other bylaws. It may not be exactly word for word, but it's close. They have put a little enhancements here and there, but ninety percent of it is from other towns' bylaws that we just pilfered.
Has it been approved?
That have been approved, sorry. By the attorney general.
I think, I think, I think you're right, but I think, I think the problem. I think, I think, I think you're right, but I think, I think the problem with some of those bylaws is that a lot of them haven't been challenged in the courts yet. So they're written, and they're written well. I know that in the one bylaw that I'm very familiar with in Brookfield, that they wrote and they tried to put a cap on things, the attorney general was very specific in their response. So even though they approved the bylaw as written, they were very specific to put the state law in there, warning them to tread carefully about how they enforce this because the state law supersedes really what they're writing in their bylaw.
But there's a lot of other towns, Bob, that have that cap. So I know that Westbrook Field has it, Sturridge has it, and...
How many have been challenged in court? That's my, that's my question, see?
No, no. I don't know of any, but...
North Brookfield also has a cap, and it's been accepted.
Right, they are accepted, but the attorney general is very careful in warning that this is the state law. So tread carefully when you try to enforce this, because if somebody meets all their criteria, the state law is gonna supersede your bylaw.
But they always are...
That's basically what they said. I'm just, you know, that's what...
Yeah, I know, I mean, it does, it does say no, I mean, I understand what you're saying, too, but the other thing is, is that we are 18, we have probably, I mean, we have even more mega, we have more than Charlton, which is, we have a lot. So it's not like she can come to us and say, or it's...
We have a whole group of mega wants on just a golf course.
Pull your weight here, you know? It's the Boston area that's not pulling their weight. I mean, they still don't...
No, that's a fact. Absolutely true.
Right.
Derek?
We should have that panel per resident.
You should not walk around with a mona bat.
Oh, right.
A field per resident, no.
No, I really take my hat off to all your efforts. Doing what you're doing is not easy, is part of the planning board, where I feel like I can't, you know, justify or stop this kind of projects on a rural area, and you see all these farms and everything, it's so cruel. I really appreciate it, and as a resident, I'm very happy what you're doing. And if there's any more help I can do as a resident, I will do. I hope everything goes well, and like, you have my support, and I really appreciate, what you're doing is very, it's extremely hard, and you've been doing a great job.
Anything else from anybody? Kathy, also? It's, obviously I have to have the woman read it all, all of you and you, when we meet Wednesday night next week, hopefully those in attendance will agree with what's going on, and it will open up the eyes of many who have not known or don't know what's going on, or will educate others when they get outside. Are you gonna make, or do you wish the board to make any copies available to townspeople after that meeting?
As far as having a file of them in your office?
After your, your public hearing.
You post them in the clerk's office.
At the town clerk's office. I was gonna send them to, tomorrow is gonna, tomorrow morning I'm gonna come in after I, it's just because you love to see me, right? And I was gonna drop off something with Nancy, so she has some copies of whatever I currently have.
I wouldn't, if I could stop you there, I would not drop off anything now. You do not have a final decision.
Yeah, you gotta wait.
You have to wait.
If you drop off something now and someone picks it up...
Even if it just says draft?
Even a draft.
Okay, all right.
A final decision is what people want.
We want it from town council.
Because they're gonna discuss it at Mason's, they're gonna discuss it at wherever, church, I don't know. And if they're discussing something that is not in the final draft...
Right.
Why did they do this? That's why we should have it, and, hello? After the meeting on Monday, you can say, they will be publicly displayed for pickup and your review on tomorrow, the 18th or whatever. That way they can be there. We can, if Rachel wishes, we can put some in the assessors' office and list where they'll be. And if, if there's enough trees left, we can make a whole bunch of copies and put them right out here on a table.
Right.
Because people are gonna want it. I know the best place to go after this has been heard on Wednesday night will be Billy's. That's the sicko station in town. Everybody will, but that's where it happens, places like that. But those are the things that, you know, we should consider and have the final copy, not a draft.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Anything else from anybody here references this? I wanna thank everybody here in attendance tonight, and I will do so more on Wednesday night. Yeah, Tom, thanks for this. Joyce, anything else from you folks here?
No.
Hopefully we'll see all of you there on Wednesday night, okay?
Next Wednesday.
The acknowledged one is if he's signed by, okay? With that, comments?
Next Wednesday.
Wednesday night, the seventh teeth, right?
Yep, but not the...
Today's Monday.
We're only Monday here.
Oh, yeah, Wednesday night.
Yeah, okay.
Today plus 10.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, eight plus 10. But anybody, any comments? Comments, concerns, anybody? Come on, Derek.
Maybe just me, but the corner of 19 and, you know, when that farm was burned out?
Red Street.
They, they, Red Street.
Yeah.
So, you know how they pit in the front, they put everything down and they left it open?
Yep.
Have you ever seen the difference between the vegetation and that wetland has died after that?
Yep.
Just worse.
You don't know what, you don't know what got in there, what got in there after they cut it out. We don't have, but it'd be nice if someone came down and took a water sample. One, to see what, well, that's just it.
Oh, my gosh, but it got off the road and went...
Red Street, the, where floods? 19, there was a wetland there, and all the vegetation is dying there.
Oh, there's been so much stuff.
Probably salt.
Yeah, but they have a lot of premium.
Young salt, because this year they're using more straight salt than sand, so it's probably just the salt.
What wetland, in front of the highway garage or to the downstream?
Yeah, yeah. So that corner over there. Look at the, that, where that intersects Red and 19, that wetland over there, it used to be very nice, but now it's only, everything is like dying into the water.
It's gotta be the salt. That kills trees, too.
Oh, yeah, it does.
If you have the trees, the edges, you'll go along and you'll see where the salt trucks go out.
You know, it kills stumps in there. I augur a few holes in it, fill it with rock salt. Couple years later, it's done.
Good question for conservation. I will drop them immediately. Other than that, there's two here?
I think there's two here.
Those are the two, on favor?
All right, Derek.
All right.